Being to order. Please note that this meeting is being attended by City Council and staff via teleconference. Thank you for your patience as we continue to navigate city business through this meeting process. For the benefit of the public and as required by the Brown Act, the vote will be by roll call. City Clerk, will you please take roll?
Mayor Sestarsik?
Here.
Mayor Protem Kalmit?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Verapapa?
Here.
Councilmember Masalabet?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the City Council, this is a time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
No.
Yes, I'd like to pull item G.
Item G. Okay, is there anything else? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Shall move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Um, City Clerk, could you please call the vote by roll call?
Just to verify, was that Mayor Protem, a second?
I believe so.
Okay. Mayor Sestarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmit, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Verapapa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalabet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that's five oh, that passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to presentations and recognitions. Seal Beach COVID-19 Local Emergency Review. Chief Goncheck, do you have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Gloria, if you can post the PowerPoint and I'll just say next and you can slide through the PowerPoints from there. Before we get started, I'd like to go through some of our empirical data.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Some of the empirical data that we're going to discuss right off the bat comes down to worldwide cases. We're now up to 3,029,452. Worldwide deaths are now up to 210,374 deaths. The United States has the highest number of cases in the world, now at 983,848 cases. We have 55,735 deaths here in the United States. State side in California, we are still at fifth in the nation with 43,853 cases. This is now behind New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, and Illinois. Sadly, we are now up to 1,724 deaths in California. Moving on, here are some up-to-date numbers in regards to Orange County. Orange County cases have increased to now 2,126 just since last Thursday with a death toll of up to 39. Our deaths in Orange County ages 65 and over are 23, ages 45 to 64 is 11, ages 35 to 44 is 3, ages 25 to 34 is 2. The genders are 25 male and 14 female deaths. Orange County hospitals now have 157 cases that are currently being hospitalized with 62 of them in the intensive care unit. Next, some bordering municipality and Seal Beach data. Long Beach has increased to 582 cases with 31 deaths. Huntington Beach is now at 183 cases, Cypress at 41, Los Alamos with 20, Garden Grove with 89, Westminster at 36, and here in the city of Seal Beach, we have 11 confirmed cases. Now that I'm finished with the data, I'd like to move on to the PowerPoint. If you move past Slide 1 to Slide 2, Gloria, to the tunnel, I'd like to show everybody that there is light. Although we may not be at the end of the tunnel, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I'm not a big fan for cliches, but this is about where we're standing today. Not quite at the end of the tunnel, but we're almost there. With that, we ask for patience. We ask for everybody to understand the information that we receive and the information that we're providing to you is the best up-to-date information at this time. And some of the steps that we're going to take moving forward on our roadmap to recovery in the city of Seal Beach depends on a lot of things. And a lot of those things I'm going to go through here in this PowerPoint. Next slide, please, Gloria. It starts at the national level with the White House phases. For individuals, we ask everyone to do the same thing that most of everybody has been doing here in the United States. Continue to practice good hygiene. If you feel sick, stay at home. Next slide, please. For employers, develop and implement appropriate policies in accordance with federal, state, local regulations and guidance that are done by industry leaders and best practices. Monitor your workforce for indicative systems, excuse me, indicative symptoms. Do not allow symptomatic people to physically return to work until they've been cleared by a medical provider. Develop and implement policies and procedures for workforce contact tracing following employee COVID-19 testing. Next slide, please. The White House uses what they call gating criteria. In essence, if you're a horse waiting to come out of the gate, hence the word gating. States or regions satisfied before proceeding to the next phases of opening include things such as symptoms, cases, and hospitals. What they're looking for specifically is a downward trajectory of influenza-like illnesses, or ILI, reported within a 14-day period, and a downward trajectory of COVID-like syndrome cases reported within that same 14-day period. Cases, a downward trajectory of documented cases within a 14-day period, or a downward trajectory of positive tests as a percent of total tests within 14 days, AKA flattening or increasing the volume of tests. Third, hospitals, being able to treat all patients without crisis care and robust testing programs in place for at-risk healthcare workers, including emergency antibiotic testing. Next slide, please. Right out of the gate, as we can all assume, is Phase 1 for states and regions that satisfy that gating criteria. Phase 1 for individuals would include all vulnerable individuals should continue to shelter in place. Women in public, maximize physical distancing. Additionally, avoid socializing in groups of 10 or more and minimize nonessential travel. Next slide, please. Phase 1 for employers, continue to encourage teleworking. Return in phases. Close the common areas such as kitchens, dining rooms, business practices where social distancing cannot occur. Again, minimizing nonessential travel and make special accommodations for those who are vulnerable within your organization. Phase 1 for special sectors, we're looking for schools and organized youth activities to remain closed. Visits to senior living facilities and hospitals are prohibited. Large venues are only able to operate if physical distancing protocols are followed. Outpatient elective surgeries may resume if the guidelines are followed. Gyms may open if physical distancing is being able to be practiced. Bars should remain closed. Next slide, Gloria. Phase 2 for states and regions with no evidence of a rebound and that satisfy the gating criteria a second time. Phase 2 for individuals would include all vulnerable individuals should continue to shelter in place. Social distancing should be practiced with gatherings of more than 50 people being avoided. Nonessential travel then may resume. Employers can continue to encourage teleworking, close the common areas, nonessential travel can resume, and consider special accommodations for those who are vulnerable. Next slide, Gloria. Phase 2 for the special sectors, schools and organized activities for use can reopen. Visits to senior care facilities and hospitals should be prohibited still. Large venues can operate with moderate physical distancing requirements. Elective surgeries may resume if facilities adhere to the guidelines. Gyms can reopen if they adhere to physical distancing guidelines, and bars may open and operate with diminished standing room occupancy. Next slide, please. Phase 3 for states, regions with no evidence of a rebound and that satisfy the gating criteria a third time. Phase 3 for individuals, vulnerable populations can resume cautiously with public interactions. Low-risk population should minimize the time spent in crowds. Next slide, please. Phase 3 for employers would include resume unrestricted staffing of work sites. Phase 3 for special sectors, visits to hospitals and senior care centers can resume. Large venues can still operate under limited physical distancing protocols. Again, gyms can remain open if they adhere to the standard protocols for sanitation. And lastly, bars can operate with increased standing room occupancy. To drill down a little bit further, now I'm going to move into the state of California Stay-at-Home Order. If you can go to the next slide, Gloria, you're going to see the great seal of the state of California on your right. And next slide after that is going to be the overview of the Governor's Stay-at-Home Order. On March 19th, 2020, the Governor stated to protect public health, I as the State Public Health Officer and Director of the California Department of Public Health order all individuals living in the state of California to stay at home or at their place of residence, except as needed to maintain continuity of operations of the federal critical infrastructure sectors. Next slide, please. What did that mean? So I'm going to go over some of the Governor's plan that was released on April 22nd. One, the ability to monitor, excuse me, next slide, Gloria. One, the ability to monitor and protect communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating, and supporting those who are positive or exposed. Two, the ability to prevent infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID-19. Three, the ability of the hospital and healthcare systems to handle surges. Four, the ability to develop therapeutics. Five, the ability for businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing. Six, the ability to determine when to reinstitute certain measures if necessary. Next slide, please. The Governor's plan, there is no set end date for California Stay-at-Home Order. Again, there is no set end date for California Stay-at-Home Order. Several counties or their local municipalities within the state of California have an end date, however, the state of California by Governor Newsom is a date to be determined. Furthermore, Governor Gavin Newsom has joined a multi-state task force along with Oregon and Washington, and I believe additionally, just in the last couple of hours, joined Colorado and Nevada to discuss a massive reopening plan for the West Coast. He warned that some restrictions such as masks in restaurants and bans against large gatherings will stay in place through the summer. Schools have been closed throughout the rest of the school year. Next slide, please, you'll see the great County of Orange logo on the right-hand side, Gloria, deferring to state guidelines. So for the most part, the County of Orange has deferred to state guidelines, and right now, we are working with the county to try and come out with a plan throughout most municipalities that are in line with one another. However, the city of Seal Beach is unique as we border with the city of Long Beach is within another jurisdiction or another county, obviously that of Los Angeles, and our neighbors to the south, Huntington Beach, who has several different orders in place that are not the same as Seal Beach. That being said, we are not Huntington Beach, we are not Long Beach, we are the city of Seal Beach. Next slide, please, Gloria. The next slide is the city of Seal Beach, our local roadmap to recovery. You'll see our beautiful pier on the right and what it used to look like with people walking along and taking in the sunset. Next slide, Gloria. This is our phased approach to opening the beach. This is our Phase 1 specific to the beach. It would be a limited public access phase for a date to be determined. This would mean increased lifeguard staffing for observation, education, and rescues in anticipation of that reopening date. B, to open the beaches and bay shorelines to walking and running. No gathering of any kind on the beaches or bay shorelines to include not all-inclusive, but stopping, standing, sitting, lying down. However, no games of sport, no towels, no umbrellas, and no chairs, specifically for those items mentioned above. C, open the ocean for all recreation uses, for example, boating, fishing, swimming, surfing, paddling, kiteboarding, et cetera. Social distancing and face covering would still be recommended on vessels. Parking with a vessel trailer track at a boat launch only, specific to aquatic park. D, next slide, Gloria, sorry. City parks, amenities, and pier would be remaining closed. E, the coastal parking lots to remain closed if necessary. We would use coastal street park enclosures to assist with limiting crowds or parking issues within Old Town. F, face covering is still recommended when reasonable and required when conducting essential activities. Again, since there's been some miscommunication with that, face covering would be recommended when reasonable and required when conducting essential activities. G, when using the beach, our recommendation would be to please swim near a lifeguard. Next slide, please, Gloria. Additionally, we need to remind our citizens that if we do open our beaches, even if it's minimal, or for recreation, or for the weekdays, or for the weekends, regardless of how it is conducted, we would need more staff, hence the requirement for more police officers, more lifeguards, more parking enforcement, and more lifeguard staff to assist with our orders that are currently in place. This in turn will reserve in overtime for police and marine safety personnel. Next slide, Gloria. Would be Phase 2. What does that mean for the city of Seal Beach? It means a little bit more light at the end of the tunnel for a date that's not yet determined. Responsible public use phase would include A, allowing gatherings and compliance with federal, state, and local distancing order as previously described. B, open Seal Beach and Surfside Beach to all the water uses, including swimming, paddling, et cetera. C, open the pier and city parking lots and city parks, open coastal parking lots, and et cetera. Next slide, Gloria. Next phase is Phase 3, or what I'll later describe as the green light. This is entire public use phase. There will be no restrictions. Next slide. Talk a little bit about specifically the Old Ranch Country Club, or our country club in the city of Seal Beach, the only one we have. The guidelines for reopening this golf course are specific. The golf course access and some of the requests that we've been working with Old Ranch Country Club General Manager Frank Carrera with specifically are some of the below-listed again, items, but they're not all-inclusive. We request the golf course access open Monday through Sunday from 6:30 to 6:00 p.m. Excuse me, 6:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Golf cart use would be prohibited with county recommended board supervisor guidelines, and all members must walk. In order to play, you must have a reserved tee time. Tee times may be booked no more than one day in advance and by phone as well. No member can book more than one tee time, four players per day. No more than four players per group, no exceptions. All tee times must include the names of all players, no exceptions. To be determents will not be permitted to play. Members are instructed not to arrive more than 10 minutes early, and as well as soon as they're finished with their game, to leave immediately following. Guests are permitted, but only on a limited basis. Walk-on-play will not be determined, excuse me, will not be permitted. Tee times will be spread 15 minutes apart. Groups may not tee off until the entire group in front of them has cleared the green. Next slide, Gloria. Some other mitigation measures that we'd like from the golf course. Our six-feet social distancing requirements. Face masks required to be worn at the club at all times, including on the golf course. Golfers are not to congregate or linger in any area of the club before, during, or after their round, including the staging area for the first tee. Staff at the country club will be monitoring for face masks and gloves inside the course facilities, that's when staff will be wearing face masks and gloves, not the players. Access to course at first tee and communicate required compliance of all golf course access protocols. Last part of this is that we'd hope the driving range, practice putting greens, and practice short game area are closed. Next slide, Gloria. We're going to move on to the citywide reopening plan. Again, this is a timeframe that is unknown, but things that we've been discussing for city staff. The introduction is that this plan is an agenda to show, of course, what we've been discussing, the United States COVID-19 Response Plan, as well as the state of California, as well as the county order. It'll cover the actions that will be necessary as the response phase transitions into a recovery and reopening phase that is safe for not just the people, but as well as the economy here within the city of Seal Beach. Next slide, Gloria. Again, the city of Seal Beach plans to implement a phased response with specific actionable items that are correlated by triggering events based on the guidance from the following entities. We adhere strictly to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, California Department of Public Health, Orange County Department of Public Health. As a reminder, in a public health emergency, which we are now in, state and county public health officials may direct orders that supersede the plan. Likewise, the local emergency may supersede other orders that are given by the county, hence our beach situation. Next slide, Gloria. Citywide reopening plan. It starts in phases. So Phase 1 would be a confirmed community spread within the United States, which is what started back in early, excuse me, early to mid-February-ish, and then within the United States in early March, and then confirmed cases here in Orange County would be Phase 2. Phase 3 would be community spread in Seal Beach or contiguous city or employee cases, that is where we're currently sitting. And then Phase 4 would be the resolution of the epidemic phase or pandemic phase. Next slide, Gloria. The prerequisites for the citywide opening. There have been various white papers and proposals written on when and how to reopen the economy within the varying tireframes and mechanisms. As I said before, Governor Newsom stated that before any stay-at-home orders could be lifted, those following six indicators must be met. Next slide, Gloria. What do each one of those mean? So when we talk about the ability to monitor and protect the communities through testing, contact tracing, isolating, et cetera, that means that state officials say they're looking at how prepared healthcare workers are to test Californians who are symptomatic of COVID-19, or if they have the resources to contact individuals who have tested positive, to prevent spreading. Officials said the state would continue to train the healthcare workforce as they gain access to testing for all. What does the ability to prevent infection in people who are at risk for more severe COVID-19 mean? That means that state officials said they're looking at the resources available to help groups who are at risk of contracting the virus, such as our seniors, to help them remain physically distant from society. The state says that it would work and also look at programs in place to help groups that are congregated, such as those in nursing homes, schools, the homeless population, incarcerated individuals, that would be prepared to stop spreading the virus throughout any of them. Next slide, Gloria. What does the ability of the hospital and health system to handle surges mean? This means that hospitals may see a surge of the coronavirus, as we've all been discussing. Governor Newsom said that they're looking at whether or not hospitals have the bed capacities and/or the supplies, specifically personal protective equipment or PPEs, to handle any kind of surges before any of the state stay-at-home orders are modified. Governor Newsom also states that they're monitoring the hospitals on how they can respond well or not well while treating everyday healthcare needs. Next slide, Gloria. The ability to develop therapeutics. Governor Newsom and health officials continue to stress the importance of this, particularly in the absence of a vaccine. Officials have said that they plan to continue to engage research partners and national labs and have a coalition currently in place to research therapeutics. Next slide, Gloria. The ability for businesses, schools, and childcare facilities to support physical distancing. Governor Newsom has discussed the importance of redrawing floor plans when it comes to practicing these orders specifically to schools, businesses, and public places. The state would like to introduce strategic guidelines and expectations on what physical distancing would look like after the rollback of this. Next slide. The ability to determine when to reinstitute certain measures if necessary. The state wants to look at and make sure that they have plans in order to reintroduce the stay-at-home order or any other interventions if the need arises after restrictions are loosened. The Governor emphasized that Californians need to continue practice social distancing. Next slide, Gloria. So the next slide, you're going to be looking at what's called the red light, yellow light, and green light. Much like how the response phases are tiered and gradual approach, in the beginning of March, the same will be true for our reopening. Although much depends on state and county orders, this plan will cover the areas that are not likely governed by these entities and where we have greater operational control and real latitude. It's not expected that these phases will only proceed in one direction. In fact, it's likely that there will be periods where there is a need to move back and/or forth to a phase with more restrictions as the conditions dictate. These jumps could occur multiple times over the next 12 to 24 months until a vaccine is both discovered and administered. Much like the 1918 pandemic, it had three separate infection waves over a two-year stretch, and it's possible for this to occur again today. Due to the cycling, the reopening phases will not utilize a linear sequential naming scheme, but instead be based on this traffic light concept. The red light is currently where we are today, the stay-at-home order remains in place. The yellow light would be reopening of most businesses with physical distancing measures. And the green light would be lifting of all restrictions. Next slide, Gloria. Again, red light would be where we are today. Maximum mitigation strategy with all public health orders in full effect. The community spread is still ongoing with sustained decreases in infection. Unfortunately, we're not there yet with the decreases. That would mean that all of our public orders are still in effect, the stay-at-home, the gathering of any sizes, the businesses, those being essential are closed, schools closed, and restaurants, except for takeouts, are closed. Masks must be worn in public during essential activities, however, exercise is only suggested, not required. Physical distancing is enforced where essential businessings are operating. Next slide, Gloria. Some further city policies that we took is that City Hall is still operating on an employment basis only, trying to use as much digital activity as we can. Senior and community centers and city facilities are closed. Recreation and other city programs are canceled or postponed. The beaches, pier, parks, playgrounds are closed. The beach parking lots, public restroom, St. Gabriel Bike Path within city limits are closed, except green spaces are open. Employees who are considered high-risk continue to telework or utilize admin leave. Meetings are teleconference only. Temperature checks are in place for all first responders at the beginning and end of their shifts. All shifts are staggered where possible for essential employees, therefore, we could supplement one shift with another if one entire shift becomes ill for any particular reason. Masks or face coverings are available to all employees to wear on duty at any time at their request. Next slide, Gloria. Next slide would be the yellow light. This would be a sustained reduction in infection, and restrictions would be partially lifted one at a time. In no particular order would we start lifting restrictions. It would be dependent upon what we're seeing at the time and what kind of activity with our data drives each decision. However, some stay-at-home orders would be lifted. Gatherings of no more than 10 are allowed within physical distancing. Most businesses would be allowed to reopen with physical distancing in place. School campuses might reopen with additional protection measures. Obviously, we'd have to work with Los Alamos Unified School District to see if and when they are ready to do so. Restaurants are reopened with 50% capacity and physical distancing for tables. Facial coverings are encouraged to be worn in public. Physical distancing would be continued to be encouraged. Next slide, Gloria. Sustained reduction in infection and restrictions partially lifted again in yellow light for city policies. City Hall would be reopened with enhanced protection measures and continuing digital if possible. Community centers and some city facilities would reopen with enhanced protection measures. Senior care center would remain open, excuse me, would remain closed. Again, senior center remains closed. Recreation and other city programs are resumed with enhanced protection measures. The beaches, pier, and parks reopen, but playgrounds remain closed. Employees who are considered high-risk continue to telework or given low-risk duties. Meetings of 10 or less allowed with enhanced protection measures in place still. Teleconferencing would still be encouraged for larger meetings. Temperature checks remain in place for first responders. Shifts continue to be staggered as much as possible. Masks or face coverings continue to be available for all employees on duty. Next slide. The next slide is pretty simple. Green light would mean all restrictions are lifted. Again, that decision would rely heavily on national, state, and/or county health directives based on a combination of factors, including, but not limited to, reduction in infection, healthcare capacity, testing, and therapeutic abilities and capabilities. Next slide, please. Why keep portions of Seal Beach closed? The Governor today, for those who listened in on his press conference, quote stated, "We cannot see images like the ones we saw Saturday in Newport Beach." Now, I'm not one to give into rumor control or not. I'll leave the media up for everybody else to determine and decide what is true or what is fake news or what is real news. Next slide, Gloria. There are some polls going around out there. Whether or not you partake in those polls, just remember that change.org allows people to participate anonymously, so you may partake in any kind of poll and go to as many computers or cellphones you like and punch in one yes or one no, depending on whatever the poll is, as well as nextdoor.com. Next slide, Gloria, to community support. A recent poll that was sent to me- A recent poll that was sent to me was whether or not the city of Seal Beach should remain open or closed. And then there's separate sections on whether the city and beach should remain open or the beach should open only. Out of 546 of those votes, again, I'm not leaning one way on the Bolivia test or not. I have no idea. It says that 57% of the city and beach should be closed, with a total of 23% saying that city and beach should be open, and then another 20% just saying that the beach should be open. Next slide, Gloria. As most of you know in our city, there's a list of things that took place over the last month, a little over a month and a half now. Particularly the proclamation, literally one month and a half from now, or prior to now, we proclaimed a local emergency. I'll let everybody read through that slide if you wish. Next slide, Gloria. I'll highlight a couple of those things. Again, we're still in the continuity of operations, so that means that we have a plan. If something were to happen to any one of these employees, the next employee would be able to step up and handle each person's prior duties to the time where they became ill. Again, our street sweeper, parking enforcement, has been suspended since March 17th and still stays that way. Again, the suspension of street sweeper parking is still in effect. Next slide, Gloria. In the month of April, we asked everybody to wear some type of face covering when in public, interacting with essential workers or conducting essential activity. Grocery stores were then checked to ensure compliance with face coverings and mask requirements. Additionally, long-term care facilities were contacted and checked to ensure compliance with government's orders. Over Easter weekend, we asked and parked, or closed park parking lots temporarily to prevent any crowding within those green spaces. And before I move on, unless there's any other questions, I will be forwarding this back to City Manager Ingram. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. So Mayor and Council, are there any specific questions of the chief that you have at this Okay, if not, Mayor, we can move on then to the next item. I will. Do you want to reiterate just for the public that we are presenting this local emergency update, and we will continue to do so at every regular meeting of the council as we've done the last couple of meetings?
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to oral communications. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any item not on the agenda unless authorized by law. No other business shall be considered. All email comments the city clerk received before the start of the meeting were distributed to the city council and made available to the public on the city's website. Email comments received after the start of the meeting will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. City Clerk, do we have any emailed comments?
Yes, Mayor, we received five emailed comments. They've been distributed to council via email, and they are available on the city's website.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Steele, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, prior to the meeting this evening, the council met in closed session regarding the one item on the posted agenda. All council members were present by telephone. The council took no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Ingram, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I have a couple items tonight. As all of you know, at the last council meeting, I spent some time and really commending the dedication and commitment of our awesome staff team and guiding us and working together side by side through this crisis. But I really wanted to highlight one item tonight. Last Tuesday, April 21st, our recreation coordinator, David Net, received a personal phone call from Senator Tom Umberg, recognizing him and the recreation team as everyday heroes for their work in delivering meals to seniors throughout our community. Senator Umberg also recognized our recreation team on social media for their work. So I just wanted to read the post, just because I just thought it was really incredible and really special, and really highlights the type of work that our staff team is doing right now. Senator Umberg posted, "For many homebound seniors in Seal Beach, Meals on Wheels Orange County has been their sole source of nutrition during the pandemic. However, Meals on Wheels relies on volunteers, often seniors, to deliver the food, and COVID-19 has complicated this." That's where our everyday hero comes in. David Net is the Seal Beach Recreation Coordinator, and his department, really under the leadership of Tim Kelsey, has taken over all meal deliveries. The department delivers to 350 households per week, and the meals they provide are 100% of the U.S. nutritional recommended dietary allowance. David, I'd personally like to thank you for making sure that homebound seniors are not forgotten. And so again, goes without saying, just another illustration of the incredible staff team that we have. So I wanted to personally and publicly thank David Net, as well as Tim Kelsey, for their leadership, and all of our part-time recreation staff that are making this possible through their work. Having said that, while we're on the same topic, I also wanted to thank Councilmember Massa Lavitt. I know that she personally did a ride-along with David last week to see how that whole process is working, starting out at the North Seal Beach Center and then riding a route with David, personally delivering meals, and also our city clerk, Gloria Harper, who did the same. And so Sandra and Gloria wanted to thank you for taking time out of, I know there's a lot going on right now, but taking time out to safely join our staff so you could see how this is really making a difference every day for our seniors. Second item I wanted to share is, last week, the city of Seal Beach joined together with the city of Los Alamos and the Los Alamos Unified School District to thank and honor all essential workers. It's titled "The Red, White, Blue, and You Campaign," which was designed to show appreciation for the essential workers that are putting their own safety at risk in order to help serve their communities, be it healthcare professionals, military, firefighters, police officers, lifeguards, school employees, grocery and restaurant workers, the postal service, and bankers, and several others that are working around the clock, providing vital service to our communities throughout this crisis. And so last week, the city started placing banners throughout our city in visible spaces to ensure that our residents and essential workers know how much we support and appreciate them and all that they're doing, and how thankful we are. Hopefully, our community is seeing those banners, their colorful banners, that say "Thank you to our shining stars." And really wanted to give a shout out to the city of Los Alamos for leading this effort along with the Los Alamos Unified School District, and then our city and our staff team in joining with this effort for our community. And then finally, just wanted to say, I know at the last council meeting, I briefly mentioned a city mailer that the city's been working on in conjunction with the U.S. Postal Service, and it's a basically a resource, a postcard mailer that's going out to all of our residents with several different COVID-19 resources, be it federal, state, county, and local, and really another way that our city's focused on enhancing outreach to our residents, and we're really hopeful that our residents will take the time when they receive that in their mailboxes to really hold on to it. It has a city directory in there as well for phone numbers, whether it be at the city level or at the county level, for support as well. And I want to thank Patrick Gallegos, our Assistant City Manager, for his leadership effort with this mailer. And again, we're hopeful that our community will see that it's a valuable resource.
Is now exiting.
So with that, I, that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council comments. Okay, General Councilmember Comments reporting pursuant to AV 1234. I will call on you individually. Councilmember Massa Lavitt, do you have any council comments?
Well, I did attend by teleconference a meeting at the sanitation district, Orange County Sanitation District, and it was a general meeting approving general expenditures for all the big projects that sanitation district is doing. They have more than a half a billion dollars in projects going on around Orange County. And some of you may have noted that they've begun modifying Westminster Avenue between Seal Beach and Bolsa, and Bolsachica, and that will be a two-year-long project once they get it underway. And try and be patient, that's all I can say about that. But there is one other thing that Jill was just talking about Golden Age, Golden Rain Foundation, and the Meals on Wheels program that is in Leisure World. There is another foundation in here. It's called Golden Age Foundation, and it raises money and accepts bequeaths from people who have passed away and distributes that money to be used only within the walls of Leisure World. Today, I got news from them in the early morning that they were going to donate $10,000 to Meals on Wheels. And then this afternoon, I got a call that says, no, it wasn't 10. They decided to contribute 20,000 to Meals on Wheels. And I want everyone to know that this organization exists, and they have really stepped up to the plate to help the people who live in Leisure World that are taking advantage of Meals on Wheels. I know that we're probably, the city is probably delivering about 150 meals, and most of those are in Leisure World. So the money, the $20,000, will be given to Meals on Wheels Orange County, and they will use it for the cost of Meals on Wheels in Leisure World. So I just wanted to tell you that. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Move on to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank our city staff once again for doing everything they can to prevent the spread of the virus. I'd also like to say thank you to the Park and Recreation staff for helping with delivery of Meals on Wheels to those who need it. I've been making phone calls into Leisure World every weekend since this started. I talked to one family last weekend who asked me how to get meals for their mother in Leisure World, and I was happy to connect them to our city staff who was able to get her the meals she needed. I work at a private company, and I've seen firsthand how devastating the crisis has been to many people. One of our customers that had, that we've had over 10 years went out of business, completely losing 30 jobs. And I think we should remember that we must help support our local businesses after this is over. We have to be hand-in-hand with the businesses in Seal Beach as we start to rise out of this crisis, to do everything that we can do as a city to support them. If we can look into providing a break on business license fees, parking in lieu, or other fees that are relevant, I think that would be very helpful to help businesses ramp back up when this is over. And that's it, all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vera Papa.
Yeah, thank you. I would like to take this moment briefly to thank the city manager and chief of police and all of their staff for the tireless effort and proactive approach in battling this coronavirus for the safety of our city and our residents. I would also like to thank all of our residents for their cooperation and patience in practicing social distancing and the stay-at-home orders. Lastly, I would like to thank our frontline first responders, essential workers, grocery workers, restaurant workers, everyone out there that's working for all their hard work during this difficult time. And just to mention that, as stated earlier, there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I think we're making a lot of progress, so stick with the plan. So thank you very much again.
Okay. And Mayor Protem Kalmick, do you have any comments?
Just one, I would certainly reiterate everything that was said by the, those of you that preceded me, and I would just encourage our residents to just stay the course, you know, that the city has developed plans, as you saw in Chief Gonchar's presentation, that when we are given permission, that we will have a plan in place so that we can immediately start doing the things that we'd all would like to see, whether it's our golf course reopening, our beaches. But the fact of the matter is, is that the numbers that we have gathered so far indicate that Seal Beach has a very low incidence of infection and an extremely low incidence of deaths, which at this point are none. And I think that's very important, and that has to play into the fact that the city has done a great job in support, and supported by the citizens, in keeping the social distancing and being willing to put up with some inconveniences that in the long run will hopefully be a memory. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I think most of this has been said. I want to thank the residents for their patience in adhering to the guidelines and keeping our numbers low. Thank you to the chief of police, city manager, for the plan to move forward and the light at the end of the tunnel. And thank you to all the first responders and all of our healthcare workers out there for taking care of everyone and keeping us safe and well. So, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. We have, Item G has been polled, so I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item G.
I'll move forward. Yeah, this is Sandra, I'll move.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Mike.
Okay, Mike seconds it, okay. City Clerk Harper, could you take the vote by roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Sastaric, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmick, how do you vote? Mayor Protem Kalmick, how do you vote?
Uh-oh.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
All right, I vote yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Massa Lavitt, how do you vote?
Okay, is that everybody? That passes, 5-0. Okay, we will move on to Item G. City Manager, is there a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. What I'd like to do is turn this item over to our Assistant City Manager, Patrick Gallegos, for he'll give a brief overview and then address any questions that the council might have. Patrick?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, staff recommends adoption of Resolution 7017, establishing hourly wages for part-time, seasonal, and temporary employees in order to remain in compliance with the state of California's minimum wage order. The part-time wage increase is a state mandate that requires the city to pay all employees about $15 an hour by January 1st, 2022. What staff has proposed is the most cost-effective method to accomplish over the course of three calendar years while maintaining 5% calendar years, while maintaining five percent grade separation between classifications and five percent between salary steps, which the city has assigned for the full-time and part-time salary schedule, and which is a best practice across the human resources field. Essentially, what staff has done is to increase the pay for those below thirteen dollars an hour in calendar year twenty twenty, as mandated by the law, while maintaining five percent separation up and down and across the salary schedule, rather than making it across-the-board increase for each classification, which would be less cost-effective. This resolution would allow for the same methodology in calendar years twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. The state's mandate does allow the governor to pause a scheduled increase for one year if a certain economic or budget condition is met. To date, the governor has not done so, and there have been no discussions about it taking place at the state level. Thus, staff has proceeded as if the mandate will move forward uninhibited. Council always has the discretion to approve a one-year pay increase for calendar year twenty twenty, like we have in the past. However, the council should also be aware that they have directed staff in the past to wrap this item up in one resolution as, instead of taking this to council each year. It also allows the finance department to get, to get ahead of processing future pay increases, instead of having to spend additional time on process, processing retroactive pay. The cost of the increase is estimated to be as follows: in twenty twenty, approximately fifteen to twenty thousand; in twenty twenty-one, approximately thirty-five to forty-five thousand; and twenty twenty-two, approximately thirty-five to forty-five thousand. Adequate funds have been budgeted for calendar year twenty twenty and will be appropriate, appropriated through the budget process in subsequent years. Staff will provide better estimates as the budget picture, along with the myriad of variables, become more clear. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, are there any, any, anybody have questions? Uh, Tom, you pulled this item?
Yes. Um, I'd like to, if you look at the current pay structure, we're getting rid of, uh, grade one, correct?
Uh, yes, the reason for that is, we do not currently have an offset.
So the, the only amount that's below thirteen dollars out of that whole spreadsheet is one cell that's twelve sixty for grade two, that's step one, right?
Yes, those would be for those five positions, which are crossing guard, maintenance aide, pool lifeguard, recreation facility leader, and beach lifeguard training.
I guess my, my question is, why are we giving everyone a raise when we only need to deal with step one, grade two? It's one cell out of the, uh, several hundred entries that needs to be thirteen dollars instead of twelve sixty.
But just, just to be more clear, uh, the increases are only affecting grades one through eleven. Uh, it, it stops at, at grade eleven, and the grades twelve through twenty-three don't receive any increases, although in subsequent years, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, they will. Uh, the, the reason is, is, uh, the explanation I just gave about the grade separation, uh, which is the classifications that you see on there, the, the number, the grade number one through twenty-three, going down, they have to be separated by five per, at least five percent, and going across, they have to be separated by at least five percent. And that is the best practice for human resources. Uh, so that's, so that's why we do it that way.
Um, so I, I guess, I mean, um, uh, can you, can you come back to me, Mayor, uh, and see if anyone else has questions?
Sure, sure. I, I, I had a question, and to be honest, I got this just before closed session, so I haven't been able to digest all the, the explanations. But my, I, I, I was wondering, when it came to some people in the chart, it seemed like maybe, uh, the, um, twenty, the level twenty-three or something, that they didn't get any kind of increase at all. Uh, some of these in later years. I was just wondering why, I, I mean, I know that we've complained in past years that we are only doing one year at a time, but this year, especially when we don't know what the financial picture's gonna look like, uh, we're committing to things in the future that, uh, that we may not agree with later when we look at all this. So, I, I was, I was personally just kind of in favor of, of doing it for this year again, and I'm not really, I'm not sure I can really digest all this right now, but that's just me, I guess, but...
And then just to, just, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, that's okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, in response to, to your talk, uh, it, it is a state mandate, so, you know, we're obligated to eventually get to that fifteen dollars an hour. Um, you know, the, the council has the discretion to, to do it in only, uh, one year, like we've done in the past, and, and that would be fine, uh, with the knowledge that eventually we'll have to get to that, that threshold of fifteen dollars.
Yeah, I, I know, I do know that, yeah, I do, I do. Okay, did anybody else have questions for Patrick?
No, but I also thought, uh, the one year would be just, for this time, would, would be a possibility, if everyone else felt the same.
Anyone, anyone else? Sandra or Joe?
No.
No? Okay. Uh, okay, Tom, did you have, uh, did you have further questions?
Yeah, and, uh, I'd like to propose an alternate motion.
Okay.
And that's to basically keep the same schedule, but increase the grade two, step one, to thirteen dollars, therefore complying with the minimum wage requirement.
Okay, keep the same schedule as, wha- what does that mean? Keep the same schedule we have now, or?
As twenty nineteen.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, same schedule we have now, except for step one, grade two would increase to thirteen dollars.
Okay, is there a second on, is that a motion?
Um, yeah, and I, just to give some reasoning, we don't have a detailed financial analysis of what this, uh, I mean, will cost the city. We have a, a kind of a range that we just got right before the meeting, but we will, we'll know a lot better in twenty twenty-one what our situation is. Um, it, it doesn't seem appropriate when Americans are losing their jobs to basically give a pay raise across the board. And we can accommodate the requirement, uh, for minimum wage by making one small change, as I'm making a motion to do. Um, and so that's what I'm proposing.
Okay, uh, is, is that a motion?
Yes, it's a motion that we modify the existing schedule for, from twelve sixty to thirteen dollars for step one, grade two.
Okay, is there, is anybody wanna second that motion? Okay, I, I would second that, okay.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, Councilman Vera Papa, okay?
Well, I just wanted to second it for discussion purposes, but go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, any more discussion? Did, uh, Mike?
Yeah, just, um, in, in asking Patrick of, of Tom's motion, would that suffice, um, the goal at this time?
Well, I will tell you, it, it will meet the obligation for the state mandate. Um, however, I think in order to, to still get in, in, within our best practices, which is the, the separation of five percent, we can, we can take it back, staff can take it back and look at it, and through the budget process, we can kind of re-level, uh, the schedule, uh, and then give you better estimate, estimates through that process, uh, if council pleases.
If that's better than making a motion for the, um, that Councilmember Moore proposed, I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, do, do, we have a motion on the floor, did you want to withdraw your motion? Or do you want to, should we?
I don't, what's the, uh, alternative?
Is to post, I think, I think Patrick is saying to postpone it to the budget process?
Kind of entirely.
Well, just, just to be specific, to Tom's motion, if the, if the council desires to go, uh, and approve Tom's, uh, motion, I, I would agree that we could, we could make those adjustments to, to grade, uh, with the grade two, step one, uh, to go over thirteen dollars an hour threshold, uh, and then take it, staff can take it back and then take a look at the others.
Okay.
But we still want that separation, and then to give you a better estimate, estimate amount, uh, as an alternative.
They're saying if the motion passed.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with the motion, okay. All right, well then we'll take a vote, uh, a vote?
Mayor, Mayor, if I could?
No?
Mayor, if I could?
Mm-hmm.
I just think it's important, I, I, there was a statement made that staff's recommending across-the-board raises, and I wanna make it clear, we're, we're not suggesting that and we're not recommending it. What we're recommending tonight, uh, is that we, we take an action and ask the council to take an action to the, to ensure that we make, we remain in compliance with the state minimum wage order, and in doing so, we're also trying to ensure that we maintain the integrity and the purpose for a salary structure. So I just wanna make that clear, because we're in, we're in really sensitive times right now, and words mean everything, and we're in a public meeting right now, and I don't want there to be an impression or a perception that, that staff in any way is recommending across-the-board raises. Thank you.
That's what it is, though, Joe.
Okay.
It's, it's, so, anyway, is there a second?
Okay, so we had a second, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second on that motion, Councilmember Vera Papa's seconded it. Um, I will move on, ask the, if there's any, is there any more discussion on the motion? Okay, I will ask the city clerk if she will take a roll call vote.
Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote? Councilmember, Councilmember Masalavet? Sorry, forgot to unmute, no.
Okay, the motion passes four one. Okay, um, public hearing, none. Unfinished, continued business, none. We'll move on to new business, item M, street lighting assessment district. Uh, I'd like to call on the Director of Finance, City Treasurer, Telford, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before you tonight are three resolutions relating to the annual levy of the street lighting assessment. As you aware, are aware, this is a routine item that is done every year, and this is just the first step in the process. To give you a very quick overview, the estimated expenses, including utility costs, assessment engineer costs, and legal expenses, are a little over two hundred thousand dollars. Of this amount, one hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred would come from the annual assessment, and the remaining balance of sixty thousand would come, would be subsidized from the general fund. We are proposing a public hearing on May twenty-sixth, where the council would consider protests and adopt resolutions confirming the diagram and assessment from tonight's agenda report. The only recommendation for you tonight are to approve the three resolutions which begin the process, set the public hearing date, and approve the engineer's report, which shows no increase in assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. This concludes my presentation, and I am available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember, uh, Moore, did you have any questions?
Um, I, was, there supposed to be a cost benefit of fifteen thousand? Or something, those mentioned, I think, in, uh, the comments?
Uh, I don't recall seeing a...
Kelly, this is, this is Steve Myter. Um, I wrote the staff report. Yes, there is a benefit. The cost of running the LED lights is less expensive energy-wise, and you do get a savings. Now, you do get, ultimately, it will be a thirty thousand dollar savings, but the way that Edison sets the program up, is we have to pay, we get fifteen thousand of savings now, the other fifteen thousand goes to the, uh, payment of the infrastructure, and I don't remember the term, but it's over a certain amount of time. So we're, we were paying for, with fifteen thousand dollars a year, we paid for the cost of the, um, capital cost of converting it over, and it's done to the bill over time. And I don't remember the term exactly, but we do get an immediate fifteen thousand dollar reduction in energy costs.
And if I may, I'd also like to point out that, uh, the general fund subsidy is screwed up at June thirtieth of each fiscal year. So, uh, if we are achieving a savings beyond this, then the general fund would contribute less than what is anticipated, uh, the sixty thousand that's projected in this report. What we have seen historically is that, um, utility costs have actually been higher than, uh, what our consultant, Will Dunn, has anticipated. So, looking back at the last five years, we've actually contributed right on, um, or just slightly below what the projected general fund subsidy is. So we would monitor that and only make sure we subsidize the amount that's necessary.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Um, is that it? Okay. Uh, Councilmember Vera Papa, did you have any questions?
Yeah, just a quick question for, uh, Mr. Myter. Uh, has there been any feedback on the new lighting?
Yes, we have, um, we have a, we've had exactly, as of last Friday, we had four people who actually came to us, and one actually didn't think it was bright enough, the other three were concerned about how the light was now shining into their window. The answer is, they put a, they'll actually go up and put a shield on it, and it will actually block, it'll, it'll keep it from going into their house. This type of light, apparently, I was talking to Edison, this kind of light, the intensity is supposed to be identical, but the light waves actually go different, the, the light waves actually don't do the same thing, they actually go out more. So, the answer is, and, is to put a shield where you don't want the light to go, you actually go up to the head and, we'll glue it onto that. And right now, we have four requests, and we'll, we'll definitely get those four requests done as soon as possible.
So that's pretty easy to get done, and they're willing to do that?
Yeah, Ed, I, yeah, I spoke with Edison, they said it's very common, and this is the answer. They've done this in many communities, and this is apparently the solution, and it works well.
Right, yeah, I got one in front of my house, and it, it's quite different, and I'm, I'm getting used to it, but I do like the fact that it lights up the cars on the street really well, so that's a good thing. I, and what is the status of it now? Are they like fifty percent done, eighty percent complete, or?
No, they're, they're substantially done. They are substantially done at this point.
That's kinda what I thought. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
No problem.
Okay, um, uh, Councilmember, uh, Masalavet, did you have any comments, questions? Councilmember Masalavet?
I have no comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Mayor Protem Kalmick, did you have any questions or comments?
Uh, just one question of Steve. Uh, does the replacement include the main street, um, lights that belong to us, as well as, um, on Electric Avenue and First Street Parking Lot, where we own the lights?
Uh, those have already been converted.
Okay, good.
So, yeah, and we do own them, and that was a project we did.
Okay.
The pier lights were done with that as part of the pier, so...
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I don't have questions, so I'll call for a motion on, on this item.
Second, by Mike?
Okay, Mike? Is there a second?
Um, I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, it's been moved to second. I'll, uh, I'll ask the city clerk to please take a roll call vote.
Mayor Sistarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Okay, that's passes five zero. Okay, we'll move on to item N, adoption of credit card transaction processing fee. Uh, Director of Finance, City Treasurer, Telford, please, do you have a report?
Yes, ma'am, thank you again, Madam Mayor. Before you begin, before I begin tonight, uh, sorry, before you tonight is a resolution establishing the credit card transaction processing fee. The city currently allows credit card payments for certain services, including utilities, parking meters, parking citations, and recreational fees, which are all collected online through third-party sites. Payments made at City Hall for other services... Payments made at City Hall for other services such as planning, building, engineering, and police department fees can only be made via check, cash, or cashier's check, and must be made in person or mailed. Due to the closure of city facilities related to COVID-19, the Finance Department has been exploring alternatives to allow the collection of payments online for all other fees. This would provide the community with a convenient option for payment, not only while we are closed, but after we reopen as well. The city uses the Bank of the West for banking services, and we have engaged the bank to provide the city with a payment portal to accept fees for all services online via credit card or using an e-check or ACH. However, for all payments made via credit card, we are levied a processing fee by the credit card payment processor. This is Visa or MasterCard. In order to provide the option for credit card payments, a new fee is recommended for adoption and inclusion in a city's master fee schedule. The proposed fee is up to 3% of the amount paid by credit card. It should be noted that there would be no fee associated with a payment if it is made via e-check or ACH. It is also important to note that this, approval of this item would not create a revenue source for the general fund, it is simply intended to function as a pass-through to the credit card vendors. Excuse me. Finally, I would like to point out that this item will aid us in achieving the goal of short and long-term fiscal sustainability by recovering the cost of providing services requested by a single party as compared to the public at large. Thank you for your time, and I am available for questions.
Okay. Um, uh, Councilmembers, Masalavet, did you have any questions?
No. So, this means that a, um, building permit will have an added 3.5% onto it on the bottom line if they use their credit cards?
If they, correct. If they choose to use the credit card form of payment, there would be an additional charge, which we are actually charged by the credit card processing agency. They do have the option of paying using a bank account, which would have no charge.
Yeah. I get that. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, um, uh, ask, uh, Councilmember Moore, did you have any questions?
Can you clarify the, the 3.50 charge would only apply if they're not using a credit card?
No. The other one is... So, I've, I've done a little bit of research trying to understand the $3.50 charge, um, due to some of our, our limitations with staff being out of the office and trying, being a new finance director, trying to understand the intent. I believe the original intent was for that to be more of an administrative charge. Um, my understanding in speaking with my staff is that we had some concerns very early on that it would prevent people, by levying that $3.50 charge, it would, it was preventing residents from signing up for online bill pay, particularly for utilities. Um, so, I'm not sure exactly at what point, but at some point in time, uh, the decision was made to not levy the $3.50 fee. So, we don't currently collect a fee. This would be, I, I would say it would be in replacement. Um, you know, $3.50 on a $10 transaction seems, um, a little bit high, but it seems significantly low on a $2,000 transaction.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Vera Papa, did you have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. And, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Jokalmig, do you have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay. And I think I am good, too. So, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Did, are there, are there any other questions? No? Okay. Then, uh, Councilmember Moore makes a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh. Okay. Sandra Masalavet, seconds? Okay. Um, City Clerk Harper, could you please call for the vote by roll call?
Mayor Sestarsik, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kalmig, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Vera Papa, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Masalavet, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. That passes 5-0. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move on to adjourn the city council to Monday, May 11th, 2020, at 5:30 PM, in memory of retired OCFA firefighter Ken Coley, who passed away on Wednesday, April 15th from COVID-19, and to meeting closed session if deemed necessary. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Good night.